We'll call the meeting in Yount City Council to order, and I'll ask Pastor Elsie Green at the City Chief Chapel Church. So please give us invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we just come to say thank you once again for allowing us to be here. We thank you for our leadership. We ask that for your wisdom and your knowledge and that you would continue to lead and guide us, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Letting allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen. Roll call.
Mr. Powers. Mr. Knight.
Present.
Mr. Bennett.
Present.
Mr. Cobb.
Present.
Mr. Black.
Present.
We don't have any orders in recognition tonight. We'll be picking up on that again on a later date. We have item number two, the approval of the agenda, and that's been published and sent to the council members. What's the wishes of the council regarding tonight's agenda?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Cobb, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise motion carries unanimously. So we have a consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the October 6th, 2014 city council meeting. It also has a prepaid claims docket dated September 30th, 2014, in the amount of $1,278,520.04. The third item on the consent agenda is a claims docket dated October 15th, 2014, in the amount of $27,025.75. What are the wishes of the council?
To move.
Move the consent agenda to the second one, Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise motion carries unanimously. The mayor is out handling specific tasks that are higher priority than this. Ms. Annie Helms, you wish to speak to the council?
Yes, sir. I'll get that. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have some concerns about not only the Douglas Quarter area but about the Harlem Avenue, TV McCrue Boulevard down at old Van Vera's school, down on Elmer Street right off of 431, and also Harlem, I think I said Harlem, Central Avenue with the cleanup, with the abandoned buildings and the cleanup area. I have some pictures. I'll get them out of my mind and I'm gonna pass them around.
Let me ask a question, Ms. Helms.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have a process on all these properties, and we've been addressing a good number of them. You can take that information and turn it into the building department and...
Who's over there?
Ms. Sherri Proctor.
Okay.
And then she coordinates with Mr. Tim Brannon, who's outside right now. And what they'll do is they follow up on that. They then, in the fact, we have one tonight, we have at least one tonight, and somewhere we've already had the cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
But if you'll report it to them, then they go look at it and make sure it's a nuisance.
Right.
And we put it on our agenda, and we've been addressing that. We've had as many as 20, 20-some properties. So if you'll do that, that will expedite this considerably.
Okay.
And we thank you for bringing it up, because it's helped. We've had a number of folks like you who've done that.
Right. Well, I know, I think it was on Friday night or Saturday morning for the day, they had an incident where the police department was pursuing somebody in the Central Alley, Central Avenue, and I have a nephew that lives in that area, and they talked about the abandoned houses and cars that people have a tendency to, you know, to be in or under.
It's a nuisance, if not a problem.
Right.
So if you bring those specific properties up, and you can make the complaint yourself,
okay?
If you'll do that, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions or comments?
No, I would just like to say all of the property, abandoned property in that quarter have been reported to Mr. Brannon, and it's in the process of being cleaned up.
Okay. The only challenge we have on that, just as a follow-up for the public, is that we have a process, so it takes a while, because we notify the property owners, they have the, they have not only the obligation, but they're given time to correct it before we take action, which is our preference. And then when they don't, we do it. We have to put together a bill, an invoice, and it comes back to the council. Then our staff, the city clerk, has then take it and put it on as a lien on the property taxes. So it's a lot more involved, and it does cost more to the property owner if they don't take care of it themselves. Just so you know, it doesn't happen overnight, but it starts when it's reported, Ms. Helms, and we appreciate that. Ordinances and any other comments, I'm sorry. Ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 2014 number 11. This is the first reading of AT&amp;T ordinance 8-1814. City Attorney, Tom?
Yes, this is ordinance 2014-11. It's an ordinance for the city council to approve allowing AT&amp;T Alabama to use the city's roadway for placement of facilities to provide IP-enabled video service in the city.
All right. Mr. Cassidy, you'd had a comment when we were working on this. Have you seen the proposal? You wanted to follow up on that comment that you had before.
I have had several consigns. One is that in the opening paragraphs of this agreement, it identifies correctly AT&amp;T as a telecommunications company. So if it is a telecommunications commission, you know, telecommunications company, it needs to fall under those guidelines. They have found a way to do some things, and I admire them for it. I really do. Because they found a way to skirt by some issues. Now, these issues are several things. One is that the city gets its signals from out of Columbus. In my quick going through it this morning, I did not see that is where the head end or the central point would be for you following. And I assume that it is, that it's Columbus.
I'm not sure what the head end is. We use different technologies, so head end is not...
Well, that's what I know.
Why don't you just address that already, and then we'll follow up.
Okay. Then at that point, because of where it's located, you're referring then, you know, you need to know, are the Columbus signals gonna be on it? Are all the Fox and all the PBS and all those gonna be there? And you were told that in the original meeting, in the work session. So you need to make sure those systems, that process is identified and addressed. Now, here's where it hits important to me. I appreciate the fact that AT&amp;T is saying they will make provisions for a channel like the one that I use on Bright House. But you've got to remember, the rules that are referred to under that kind of channel in this agreement are the Telecommunications Act. In the Telecommunications Act, it all relates to the head end. If they say the head end is Alabama, then I have to buy every place in Alabama. People in Birmingham, Huntsville, places like this, they don't really want to see that much of our kind of programming. Now, I have no problem if the programming is seen in those areas. I just don't want to pay for the households. I pay for each household per month covered by Bright House. That's my federal rate. Now, this rate was set up by Congress and amended in the 80s, and has got a pending amendment to it right now to even lower the rates. And the cable companies nationwide are fighting it. If they were to lower it, my rate would be 10% of what it is now. But I will say this, when I started Channel 63 here in Yount, I paid over $8,000 a month. It just kept getting larger and larger and larger. And finally, when that happened, I went off the air for a short period of time, did my homework, and came up with this current rate, and they had to do it. So just keep in mind, there is nothing wrong with putting them having the channel on, but only charging me for the area covered by my program. I don't care if it goes to 10 Buck 2, Travel, or wherever. Don't bother me. I just need to pay, and it says they'll negotiate. Well, I've negotiated with companies like Bright House, Time Warner, and I've never came out on the good end of the stick. All I'm asking you to, give people like me a fair chance. And you're the ones in control. I'd like to see them come here. I think competition is good for the city, as long as it's fair competition. I've known about this IP technology and voice-over IP technology for over 10 years that AT&amp;T's had. They had the equipment 10 years ago when my mother passed away in Knoxville, Tennessee. One of their engineers told me about it, who's a cousin of mine. They had the equipment setting in Nashville. I already knew they did. It's taken us, they've had to do their homework, and I admire them for doing that.
So let me see if I can summarize, make sure your key points. I don't want to get off of history too much. But the key point first is that where's the head end, you call it, which is where the signal and that basis comes out? And I don't know the law or the rules, whether that, once it's set up, it can change. I do know that there's higher regulatory authorities than us. But the key point you're interested in is in the local channel and the terms on which you have to negotiate for that.
As long as it, I don't care where it airs, as long as I don't have to pay for more, then you follow.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem.
I understand that.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good point. I think the, Courtney, Ms. Todd, follow up on that a little bit?
I will. I mean, and I didn't have...
No, just for everyone's, Courtney, our city attorney has been the one doing most of the discussions with AT&amp;T, and we have an AT&amp;T rep here. If he wants to say anything, he can do so. But anyway, I'll let Courtney follow up here and talk about the negotiations.
Right. When this was presented to the city council in a work session in August 18th, and one of the concerns that was brought up by the city council during that work session was how would this agreement ultimately impact Ron and the channel that he provides in Yount? And so we went back to AT&amp;T and asked them about lease access channels and agreements in their platform. And what I was told, I've dealt with Frank Sims, who's their legal counsel in Birmingham, in trying to negotiate to see if we could cut out a provision for Ron, you know, that would enable him to have this pricing like he wanted for just the Yount provision. Well, anyway, because AT&amp;T, this is what I was told, because they are not a cable provider, that it's not treated in the same manner as it would be if it was Bright House, and that they consider themselves more of a multi-point video distributor, and they said they were willing, and this is what Mr. Sims, you know, provided to me, that AT&amp;T Alabama is willing to talk with Mr. Cassidy about an AT&amp;T local interest channel, but taking a position, they take the position that it is a commercial negotiation and that it does not have a statutory duty to engage and put this in the agreement with, and that to do so would put them in a position, in a contrary position, making them closer to being a cable provider versus a multi-point distributor. So that's why this matters to them to this extent, because it really has more to do with the definition of who they are and what they're trying to do here. And the more they lean towards putting in these types of languages that provide to, provide for cable providers, then that's gonna take them away from being a multi-point video distributor. So what they, I found, I looked through several other, I didn't find any other city that had information in there about a leased access channel other than Huntsville. Huntsville had a very broad language in there, and so we got them to insert in there on page six in 4.4, that lease access or public interest channels will be offered by AT&amp;T Alabama in accordance with applicable law. And that is basically the concession that they were willing to make on this particular issue. And so this was part of, you know, the negotiations, that this was the best that I was able to get to this point in this, because they felt like that their, what they didn't want to be in a position of is that they have a specific of what they've got to do with Ron Cassidy or his company in this scenario. And then if they got to a point where it was breached, then basically if they were unable to reach an agreement with them, and then they would basically be in breach of this access agreement with the city. So anyway, that's kind of how that proceeded. So to kind of let y'all know.
I mean, Ty, do you want to make any comments?
Sure.
Ty, your role as a governmental representative...
My title is Regional Director of Legislative and External Affairs.
And we're external affairs.
Condon, Ty Condon.
To some of Mr. Cassidy's points, first and foremost, we've already reached redistribution contracts with all of the main providers out of Columbus, Fox, NBC, CBS, and we're also have made a, got an agreement to provide WSFA out of Montgomery also. So that part is incorrect. We have, or not necessarily incorrect, but that, I want to clarify that point. So those local channels are provided in those packages. Something you have to understand, what Courtney currently called a multi-point video distributor, we have completely different technology. It does not look like cable TV except to the end user. The back office technology looks completely different. Head ends or something that we, well, we call them VBOs. They're very different. It is my guess that the VBO that serves the Columbus, Georgia designated market area, which as defined by the FCC, is located in Atlanta. The one that serves most of Alabama's DMA's is in Birmingham. Serves my house in Montgomery is Birmingham. But it's different, so the programming is delivered on a DMA-wide basis, meaning what the FCC has identified as a designated market area, which in this case, on this side of the river, is Lee County, Barber County, Russell County primarily, within our territory. And then on the, and primarily Columbus, and then of course, I think Georgetown, Georgia also, across the river is also a part of that. So it is a limited scope. It is not the entire state of Alabama. We have TV markets, Birmingham, Mobile, Huntsville, Montgomery, Dothan is a TV market, and then Columbus, Georgia, which contains part of East Alabama. Now, because of, because of the technology, it does not fit the definition under the Cable Act, which is the applicable law, as a cable service. However, we have made this provision, and we have only one other channel like that in the entire country where we provide in thousands of local communities that we've addressed this. So it is not necessarily something new, but it's not necessarily something we have a depth and breadth of experience with. But we have agreed to put the provision in to, you know, by my applicable law that is in section 4.4. And so, you know, what that's gonna end up costing, I don't know.
Who would hand, who would those negotiations be between, besides Mr. Cassidy? Who would it be on the AT&amp;T side, do you know?
I honestly couldn't tell you a name. I'm assuming it's gonna be with our, we have a group of people that negotiate those things that primarily they negotiate with the local TV stations. So I'm sure, I'm assuming that it's gonna fall under their purview.
Could you, could you find that out for us?
Sure.
And just let us know. There's two points that I'd like to say. I know Ron has his interests, but if it happens to be that the technology is such that it's easier to leave it where it covers a broad area, as he described, it went into Columbus or covered all of Alabama, and his point about the local fees, from a city point of view, it'd be nice if we had our local station here that we could afford to have, and if it was by chance broadcast out to Columbus or whatever larger area, you know, we could help promote our city some more. So there's a selfish point on the part of the city off of that.
Sure.
And I think it would be, it'd be good feedback for us if we could find out who those contacts are, and just see if we can kind of open that door of communications and facilitate that as much as possible. I understand, I appreciate AT&amp;T and their attorneys' approach to this. And Courtney, thank you for stressing that. Is there any other points you want to make, Ty?
Just want to say that this is a different animal. A lot of times we come in and the only prospective local jurisdictions have is cable and franchise, and really, these are neither. And it's a new animal, and it has different nuances, it's different technology, it has its good points, but it also has its limitations. And it's not just that way here, it's that way everywhere.
And you know, Ty, that it doesn't matter whether it's a cell phone, or the cable, or hard wire with AT&amp;T, all people want is when they pick it up that it works.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This is not open forum off of this, so I'll let the media ask one question.
Just thought if you could have an explain, what are we talking about? What are we getting here? What's the basic premise of the service that you're providing?
It's a video service. It's video programming.
Would it look like television to me?
Yes, it's television. It hooks up to your television, it has channels, has all the standard cable channels that folks were generally referred to as cable channels, USA, ESPN...
A basic subscription fee to the AT&amp;T?
Pardon?
Yeah, there's a fee, yeah.
Yeah. And it comes over the AT&amp;T infrastructure, the infrastructure we already have established.
This would be in competition to Bright House?
Yes, it's a local option, competition.
Everybody be available to the entire city?
Not immediately, no. Obviously, we're ready to serve, I'm not sure exactly what number it is, but we're obviously not going to invest a lot of capital in the ground until we get an agreement where we can, you know, move forward. But this is something that'll take a while to build out.
And we had this at the work session. The technology is somewhat different, so it may reach some places that Bright House might not be right now, but then likewise, there's distance and there's other factors that come into play. I know we had some and some other issues I'm aware of where just the wiring and has to be set up just right or it bleeds out. So it's a different technology, but I'm sure Ty will give you more details on it or get you a pack on it.
Sure, sure. One other thing, just any time a new player comes in where there's already an incumbent, I'll give an example of Montgomery, Alabama, where I live. We had two, we have two what we call overbuilt cable companies. What used to be Montgomery Cable Vision is now WOW came in in the late 1980s. It took them about 20 years to really build their system out. So this is not an overnight process. We're also building out Montgomery and Phoenix City and Columbus and a lot of places where there are a lot of capital outlays. So it's a gradual process, and we would love to be able to turn a switch and get everybody serviced tomorrow, but it's just not real world.
It's expensive, a lot of capital, obviously.
Thank you, Ty. Yes, sir.
And Ed's the editor of newspaper, if you want to follow up with him after the meeting. Courtney?
Yeah, the only other thing I was, the other issues that y'all raised at the work session were whether or not, because they are also providing for one free basic installation at the schools, but they won't duplicate that service. But we put in a provision in there that the city reserves the right to receive a duplication of video services where the redundancy is necessary for public safety. And then we also put in there that the council had raised in there about that they had to provide a map of the services and/or information in the general location, and then obviously go through the permitting process.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Good work on that. And I know it took a while, but we're on the way, and you know, this is the first reading, so we'll have to have a second reading before we can vote on it. Any other comments or questions from the council? And let's move on. Resolution 142, 2014, this is authorizing Alabama Department of Transportation to put in curb ramp installations along state routes, and this is for handicap access, is that a plan, as you mean?
For the American Disabilities Act.
American Disabilities Act, correct.
And that's all it is, is getting them up to standards so it'll pass all the ADA. And there are some places up in the historic district and along the state highway that are gonna be affected by this, but it doesn't have anything to do with why...
But it's positive, it's a positive.
Yes, it's a positive to get everything up to what it needs to be for the ADA.
You make a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second? Is there further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise, motion carries unanimously. Resolution 143, 2014 is a grant that the city's received from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This grant is to support an economic impact analysis of heritage and culture and tourism for the city. It requires $1 to dollar match, so they're gonna give us $5,000, we'd have to match it with another $5,000. Any comments or questions on this, or a motion to...
I know, I make a motion we accept the National Trust for Historic Preservation grant.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second? Have we got the money to cover that?
No.
Okay, we got the money to cover that. So any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same motion carries unanimously. Resolution 144, 2014, this is to allow, to provide funding and execute, allow the mayor to execute an agreement with the Tool Design Group. Actually, we want to amend this. We want to amend this to give the grant to the Yount Heritage Association. And it's been, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll expand on this, but the Yount Heritage Association is one that is getting the in-kind and other funds for this. So the agreement needs to be signed through them. Is that a correct understanding?
That is correct.
So this would be amended to be a $5,000 allocation, Yount Heritage Associations, so that they can enter into a group with tool design to help us with engineering review of the same associate's study.
I make a motion we amend the agreement to read Yount Heritage Association and accept resolution 144-2014.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Have you got that amendment? Any further question or discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise, motion carries unanimously. Next resolution is we debatement, nuisance, it's Riverside Drive, is A.J. Rain. A.J. Rain here, or representative for A.J. Rain?
I'm understanding that they have contacted him and they've agreed to get that taken care of.
Do you want to table this then? Is that what you're saying? Table it to the next one? If they take care of it, we'll bring it up the next one. It just delays it some.
Right.
You move the table?
I make the motion to table this until our next meeting.
That's one of those on that thing tonight.
Okay. So are there any objections to table this? We'll table this the next meeting. Want to vote on it?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise, motion carries unanimously. Next is 146, 2014. This is an abatement that's already been completed, and it's fixing the cost of the abatement to $210. The property is located on Dale Road. The owner was Julian Thomas.
Jelaine.
Mine.
I'm sorry, where?
Jelaine.
Jelaine Thomas, I'm sorry. Jelaine Thomas. The cost is $210.
I make the motion that we accept 146, 2014.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise, motion carries. Resolution 147, also fixing costs on property owned by Rupert Clark Stevens located on Jackson Street. The cost is $230. What are the wishes of the council?
Make the motion to readily, 147, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose likewise, motion carries unanimously. Resolution 148 is fixing costs on property owned by Don and Barbara Gammich, property located in Cypress Cove. The cost is $210. What are the wishes of the council? are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion, one forty-eight dash twenty fourteen be approved, please.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Next item, uh, under council action and discussion, we're review a petition. I see Mr. Murph is here, and, um, city attorney Courtney, would you review this, this request for petition to vacate a portion of Union Street?
Right. Um, Union Street is, you know, in between this area where Mr. Murph's, um, office is located in Mid-South Bank, is really just what we call in the legal world, whenever we're doing title searches, what we call Paper Street. Um, it's not really a street, there's not a street there, hadn't been a street there for, you know, well over fifty years. Um, you're just talking about, um, whenever you look at the original subdivision map of the city of Eupaula, um, that it still has the street there. And so, you have to go through a process to vacate what's called a Paper Street, um, and unfortunately, you know, that means you've got to advertise for four weeks, you've got to have a petition filed, and then you got to hold a, a public hearing, and so it's not a simple process.
That's because it's public property.
Absolutely. And so, right, and so, um, and then you have to determine, one, whether or not, um, it, it would ever be a street that you'd ever reopen, or you would ever do anything with, um, and then you have to have consent of all the adjoining landowners, as well as anyone who has an vested interest basically in that area. And since nobody uses it for any kind of access, it wouldn't be that type of issue, it would just be, um, it would be subject to whatever utilities are located there, because of course, Daryl mentioned that there is a sewer line that is there, or water line. Um, and then, you know, obviously, there's the railway, the roadway there, um, that is not necessarily located where the street is located, but it's, it's abutting, um, use. So, anyway, um, so all the council would do at this point, if they want to, is to say that they're willing to set it for, um, that public hearing, and so that it can go ahead and proceed to the four weeks of consecutive notices. Um, and then you can proceed there, and proceed basically with an investigation.
So, um, one, we have to do the public hearings, and two, um, we're going to have a restriction on it, or at least, uh, uh, roadway easement on it for sewer, and are there other restrictions that the council could place, like which district it may-
Sure.
-have to comply, or?
Right. It would be subject to, you know, whatever limitations that the council wants to put on it, and then of course, it would be subject to whatever existing roadways, easements, utilities, um, for utilities or rail system, or whatever is located within that area. It wouldn't vacate any of that. It would just vacate the city's interest, um, not anybody else's.
Let me ask this one, John, you, we've done this in the past, which, usually when you, when you vacate it, isn't it divided equally between the-
It does. What happens, what happens is, as far as, yeah, what happens as far as the title to the dirt, basically, it goes to, you know, Mid-South Bank is on one side, and then Brad Murph would be on one side, and then Mr. Richardson's property would be on the other area in between this block M and block R, um, basically. And so, those adjoining landowners would go to the center line of what was the roadway.
That's right.
So.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Someone want to make a motion that we move ahead with the petition process?
I make a motion to move ahead with petition process.
Second, any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Any other council action or discussion? Someone wants to bring it? Okay, then we'll go to Finance Committee, operating statement report.
Actually, operating statement in the packet. We're currently on pace of budget, since we're two weeks into it.
You might want to, would you explain, I know that most of the council members know, would just explain that we're finishing last fiscal year.
Correct. We are finishing up this, uh, the new budget has just taken place, starts, uh, that starts October first, and the, uh, we're wrapping up what last year's budget was. We still have some, you know, unfortunately, we operate with the, uh, gas district that has the, uh, it comes in a little bit later on, so.
So our, our, our fiscal year that just completed in September will really not be balanced out until, uh, that appropriation, that allocation comes from Southeast Alabama Gas, correct?
Correct.
And that varies, it's been in November, is that right?
Middle of November.
Late of November, so. Right now, the numbers look favorable. Okay. And then we'll, we'll close that out and do a full report at that time. Uh, and I want to thank Mr. Bennett, because there's an ongoing effort for us to try to, uh, change, so that can move to the beginning of the fiscal year, uh, from two months after the cal, the fiscal calendar, and we'll keep working on it with staff. Uh, no report for education libraries owned in the chamber, I will, I take that back, uh, they do have a political forum tomorrow with the candidates, uh, are going to be speaking. I think we only have the state senate and state house representatives will be at the, at that forum. Parks, Recreation, Airport?
The business system, no, we on schedule, the weather completely should be, we on schedule, we had to have a director, so she on a job.
Great. Street Cemetery, Cemetery, Ms. Flurry?
They're busy with, uh, all the daily activities, and Angie's doing a good, Angela's doing a good job with her trash reports and getting the city cleaned up. She's staying very busy, it looks like.
Angela, the one who's using the city?
Right, that's using the, um-
Corrections. Corrections.
Yeah, the corrections.
City Corrections Program.
Yeah, the inmates.
Inmates.
He's doing a great job.
Yeah, doing a great job in getting the, getting the trash cleaned up. She's got a little schedule and that she, in the senior packet, that all the roads that they pick up daily. And like I said, they're staying busy. And, uh, streets and the public works is, you know, they're doing their regular routine with trash pickups and, and patching, and we got the street sweeper back going again, so they're sweeping the streets again.
Right.
And they had a few reports of damage Monday, uh, from the storm Monday night. I've not seen it.
Thank you. Police, fire, personnel.
Well, in your, in your packages, uh, you have, uh, your police report, you have your animal control report, and, uh, the fire department, and if you get a chance at your earliest convenience, please read it. Uh, these young men go through, uh, put their officials through a lot to get this for you to read, and, uh, before you throw it in the trash, please read it and see what they're doing, and see if things are going the way you're thinking, hoping that should go. Personally, I think they're doing a pretty, uh, pretty good job, and, uh, but we need to note, if there's some complaints you got, you know, you can't please everybody, but if you've got some complaints, I think you need to tell us.
It's come right to you, right?
Well, it comes to everyone.
Any other business for coming from the council? Here in the understanding zone.